Yay.
There you go.
Two, two.
I think she was telling her right there. She was like, help us here.
Like no form of my life. She doesn't say. Okay, I will stay. She doesn't want to.
You're too smart.
And that means.
It's been a while. No, it's just enough. She said, I'm gonna go home and get my bag.
I understand that. Unfortunately, that little perfect could have a thing.
Perfect. She's supposed to give us back today, but then.
Unfortunately, they can have my fish. All right, for me, present, probably July 4th meeting of the ordinance review committee for order at 12:30 PM. First order for business is the rule of mess. Page 26, last time we had one. I'd make votes to approve. Discussion. Corrections, follows in favor? So we're present. Uh, we have a new number, if you like to express yourself. Before you vote.
He's been here.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's been so long. All right, uh, I spoke on our first thing is, uh, mention is, uh, less than an hour ago, I received a recognition of Anna Riddle Committee.
Oh.
So. And say we accept that, we'll do the final way. So, yeah. So what the. All right. LD 2003, that's, then this, do you have something you wanted to say? Can I get free? Um, yeah, I just was, um, trying to figure out how we're gonna get this on easily on a ballot. Um, we can do it as an open town meeting, but we can tend to, like, open town meetings here. So we've been discussing heavily the timeframe on how to get it on the November ballot, which is gonna be really tight because we have to have everything limited by the first of September. We probably took a couple of weeks there, but we need time to print ballots and actually key ballots have to be available 30 days for the election. So everything has to be finalized for that now. So I think the timeframes were a little tough. But I did find out limited today, there is another referendum for the presidential primaries in March. And we can include, you know, the 2003 in that, and the guys haven't done by then. If you don't have a firm date, so we have to have stuff finalized sometime in January. Probably the first of the day.
So I was working back from the March date, because I agree, I think September was tight, also because the state has to reopen rulemaking now that they've extended the implementation deadline. They're also clarifying a few things that should have been clarified in the original rulemaking. So I'd be hesitant to put it on the ballot for November, and then we have to change it again and be in front of the town again in March anyway. So if we're working backwards, it would have to be to the town sometime in January. And so I would think you'd wanna plan for a hearing no later than December to the planning board, which means you would need to have everything drafted. And I believe it goes to the select board before it goes to the planning board, is that the case? Or can we just send it directly to the planning board?
So, the dates of the list of key now are March 5.
March 5, so that would be January 5.
That happened on my January.
Okay.
They were gonna send it to the session saying, we're scheduling it probably here for, and he'll shoot change.
Okay.
Times of the essence.
Okay. And I would think we would wanna do that probably like mid-October or early November the latest, so that if the select board does have changes, we can quickly make them before then scheduling and noticing the planning board hearing. And I think that's fairly hopeful, because hopefully a rulemaking will be completed by then, or at least there'll be enough clarity and like a draft manual that we can easily have this thesis.
And if I'm following my dates right, Anna's order, if you guys schedule a public hearing on, schedule the public hearing on the 14th, in order to follow the days, it would not, it would not make the 12th, 13th planning board meeting, is that right?
Yeah.
Should.
Well, no, we have to put the notice in that day.
I would have, have.
We've done it, we did it most of the time.
If I can get it into them first thing Tuesday morning, and then get it in that Thursday's paper, that's the 17th. Jackie's been quick on the 17th, we have proposed changes to the candidates.
Oh, we thought I called it here. Oh, good.
And we'd like to schedule the hearing for the 28th now, so.
Advocating. In time to make that.
To purpose of the planning board's speed.
Okay.
So there will be a meeting. So you think that the beginning for the 28th will be over eight minutes?
Okay.
Because we do have some people interested in medical stuff about telepathy, who can apply, but maybe five that you're not gonna get, because we can make it retroactive. But we can't drag out food on it too long. That's, that person's on the kitchen. Hey, I'm telling you, today, Mr. Jack, somebody called me wanting to know what I was doing about the cell phone service in town, because where she lives is bad.
It was a path.
I don't think our cell phone service is that bad.
We had the carrier, carrier. I don't think Ali's stuck, I would take my, I would, it was, yeah, for track seven, because track seven, a lot, whatever carrier you got, I see who's trying, who's this call's coming up. Rapid trip.
Kids that had AT&T that didn't, very good in the house, so I don't, I got US longer, it's.
Yeah, I actually.
Kids, a bunch of. There's all the, the previous carriers with two miles of where they live, nobody serves, nobody serves. It's like, someone's putting up this interference zone.
So what I have for you on LD 2003 is, uh, if you can keep sending me any wordsmithing changes, otherwise we will start going kind of page by page at the next meeting. The other thing I wanted your feedback on is, I have a couple of handouts for you, so. Coming up with an off-street parking schedule, I've looked at the international zoning code, uh, which is fairly succinct. I've looked at. Uffey Harbers, which is kind of the other end of the spectrum and pretty extensive. And then I brought a copy of our table of permitted uses, so you can take a look at. Sorry. Um, and so I just want some feedback, everybody thinking that you would wanna go into something that's a little bit more succinct. Or would you want something extensive similar to Uffey Harbers? I will say there's kind of pros and cons to both. The succinct allows for interpretation, um, and also makes it easier that if things are added to your table of uses as you go, you can try and kind of see where they would fit. However, if there's, if you're coming to town, um, that doesn't completely fit in these kind of this shorter table, you might want something a little more detailed like Uffey Harbers to know exactly what that definition is. Or we can go somewhere in the middle. But I wanna put something together for you that's within our ordinance as a draft for the next meeting, so if you can give me a little bit of feedback on what you're looking for, I'd be happy to put that together for us to review. And Uffey Harbor, when I print their whole parking ordinance, so the actual schedule starts on the second page and then goes on to the third.
What changes for me to this?
Well, this is just the one that's available online still, I don't have the one that adds marijuana, yeah. I'm sure it says somewhere in here, when you have, like, for example, the public lot on Middle Street or on the other side of Water Street or whatever, how does that impact, like, if you have a restaurant or what? Like Sarah's, Sarah's closed, but Sarah's doesn't have their own parking lot. So our ordinance currently talks about if you're in the village district, there is no, the parking is, I don't think I read it. So this would be outside of the village, so it'd be like if we get a Target on Route 1 or the new candy store, like, you'd be looking at these, they would have to have 30. But for the village, because it's so compact, um, the ordinance does already talks about that you would not. So except in Village 1 District and the Village Waterfront District, each lot shall provide adequate off-street parking. So we're really just trying to clarify what adequate means in all the other districts.
And, but you could have a, say, one on Route 1. That had a good, maybe for example, they have extra spaces, now they wanna potentially add an expansion to their business, which may increase support and command.
Right.
Maybe they'll have it.
Right.
That expansion, you know. Overall, that, you know, just about reading, and a little bit further to the present.
There hasn't been this, I, there.
Yeah.
So, then I get too complicated, and so there's a need.
Because it is, when it's overly, when it's complicated, like Uffey Harbers, when you add an ordnance or add a use, you really want to then update your parking, so it'd be, you know, that extra layer. Whereas if you use something like the international zoning code, which is the shorter one speech table that I give you, the town, the code enforcement office, sort of planning board can kind of use these and say, okay, is this an assembly, is it, well, you know, dwelling units, um, medical office versus just a regular office, a restaurant, retail? You know, they kind of are pigeonholed into these a little bit, but not necessarily in the back way. You know, you can use this to make an interpretation.
Ordinance of the, you know, uses, and we have extra uses similar. There, we guys should, I don't know, the, the, the. So they came up with something.
We never heard.
Everybody else have any thoughts about?
Well, I'm questioning, not the, I forget. They agree with the man, but.
I think simple is best.
What?
I think simple is best.
Well, restaurant, one of 100, those square feet, I have no idea what other groups for a fee.
Might think that, whatever, I will assume that, like, the, unless two floors, it's best. Always, when you speak, it's the whole restaurant, I'm just.
Right. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't even, I, you have one, one package, but this is for 100s per feet.
Well, we could strike those.
No, it could make, it goes to that, so that roughly like 100s per feet is in a restaurant, but it's, yeah.
It's about one table.
Yeah.
So a lot of spaces around one.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Four, four tables. Also bits around, so it's kind of cool. Say, well, kind of four tables, and you can, okay, you're.
Let's start with simple. Yeah, it's a nice one. I was thinking the only thing you might wanna consider is like.
Mark where it's supposedly about that acre under 40,000 square feet. It probably has.
So I was just gonna say, the only thing that's kind of missing from this table, at least at first blush that I've seen, is something like service establishments, so barber shops, hairdressers, um, I don't think I'll follow that, you know, we have that listed, we talked about tailor, laundromat, bank, uh, so I don't know if we would put that under retail, or if we wanna kind of label its own. Yeah. And in that case, really services.
McDonald's would be a restaurant, so that they already place the, plus twice three parking spaces.
I mean, that assembly at the top is kind of a catch-all, because it's really just any place that people assemble, so maybe take it from a church to, if we wanted to, a bank or a barber shop. But I didn't know if you wanted to go into a little bit more detail on that, since we have kind of service establishments, it's been a big category, at least in terms of applications that we've seen.
I don't think it's a tourist, a restaurant, I'm, after it's something, that's a restaurant, I suppose.
Right.
Church, the right side.
A town office.
A town office.
Is there a ordinance that has the list of all the activities in it?
So, yeah, so that's, this summary of permitted uses is what we have, not including here on line, because I don't have the updated ordinance, um, matrix, but this is from 2022.
Then we should use that in comparison, and then they could at least tie into each other.
On charge, could do that. Still point on.
Cut down on the fusion down road.
Library, where's library fall, this was.
Assembly. Assembly.
I wouldn't want to, I just quit.
For sure, where's the goat's gate?
So, for reference, Uffey Harbor is 6.5 spaces for every thousand square feet.
I'm telling you, so. Looking at somebody's face, it's a. You'll protect one.
It's part of the process, this is, the detail is one I did. Comment is not paid, it's private, 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 parking area on the page. I had to put down parking stripes. Notice it. Barber shops.
Okay, so what question we answering right now? They're discussing. Whether we're going with something more extensive, similar to Uffey Harbor, where you go giving one for every.
I thought we just said we all agreed something more simple makes sense.
We did, but then Don Brown had a good point, that, you know, we do wanna make sure, when we're talking about that whole service establishment, I think kind of brought up a bigger question of, is this too simple?
We wanna create something that's a little bit more hybrid.
Two pages of uses on a page.
Right.
I want them to fall into.
What's the issue of having such an extensive list compared to something that's a little more?
There's not necessarily, it's not necessarily a negative. Um, I've seen towns and I've worked in towns that have had more extensive, it's helpful to applicants, so they know exactly what they want, but at the same time, if there's something that kind of comes out of left field that isn't on this list, which we've seen in planning board in the past, where it kind of falls under, on the back, at the end of this, it says, you know, uses similar to use requiring permit from the CEO, use similar to use requiring planning board approval, that can sometimes lead us to a bit of a gray area in terms of what do you categorize it as in the table of uses? And then the question, you would add to that question of, well, now how do you have to park for it? And so it would be kind of a somewhat subjective determination by the enforcement or the planning board. So it's not really a negative, it's just something to consider.
Also, unless you get. Get, I'll not give it, just that, not give it, get down. You have any, over here, we find, so. It's also.
Right, which I think we could do, for any of these, I mean, I would.
Go on, everybody up there, these are 9 by 18.
Right.
Shall we all park in the, see how like we're gonna get in and out of our cars?
I think the latest standard is like a 10 by 18, which is still tight, especially when you have SUVs.
At the 10 by 20.
Just 21, keep on.
Big, yeah.
Do this.
Do you want me to add this down with the 10 by 20?
Well, if we go to something like this, we'll probably, um, address that.
So whatever we do, we're trying to go to the size of the ones on Water Street where I live. Tight, they're, no, they're way too long, uh, that people then go way up and then people slam in. Oh, okay.
Don't pay attention to the margins.
Yeah.
There, come here, that.
That might, might be considered different, because that's much, this is covered in that.
Right.
Not going to work.
Right. Did D, was DOT the one to design the railroad app parking lot, because I would see what that stall was.
I think we had an.
Yeah, those aren't, okay, because they probably used a different standard. I can find out what the size is. Well, that's some language about the stall width and then, and kind of some general parking standards that would make sense to have, I don't think we have to go into as much detail on the standards as Uffey Harbor does, but, um, I can put something together for you. And then, do you want me to take your crap at putting together basically a hybrid version, so not necessarily as detailed as Uffey Harbers, but not necessarily as short as this one? Or do you wanna start with the shorter and then we can build out at the next?
Something in between.
Something in between, okay. All right, perfect. Those were my questions to you, and I don't know if you have any for me on this, or LD 2003.
No, I'm, I would probably change it to that. Figure out, see what.
There's, yeah, so there's one in rulemaking, one has to do with the definition of affordability, um, and then how you calculate affordability in the larger development. So if you're getting, if you're getting an affordable, um, density bonus, it has to be 50, so it just says the majority of units, now they're clarifying it to say 51% or more of the units have to be affordable in order to get that density bonus. Then the other thing that they're gonna be clarifying in rulemaking has to do with shoreline zoning and how you, um, implement LD 2003 in the shoreline zone. So, outside the shoreline zone, when it comes to accessory dwelling units, you don't need a minimum lot size to put an accessory dwelling unit on your property. We'd still need to eat setbacks and coverage, but you don't need a minimum lot size. DEP has come out and said that in the shoreline zone, they will continue to require that you would need the lot size as well as the shore frontage. So if you have a property in the shoreline zone and you wanna add an accessory dwelling unit, you would need an additional 40,000 square feet of prop, of lot area, and then also an additional 200 feet of shore frontage in order to put that accessory dwelling. So their crafting language in kind of rulemaking for us to insert into shoreline zone section. So hopefully rulemaking should be straightforward and it might not, hopefully we'll be changing anything else, but I'm hesitant to finalize this and get it on for the November ballot, so, but we have March to look through, look forward to.
I don't know, they, they got that nine.
Don't know, because they were supposed to, if it tracks like how it went with the original LD 2003, it took a year for them to adopt the final, like, prepare it and then adopt the final rule, um, which was much longer than anticipated. And I think was part of why they extended the implementation deadline, because everyone got it on April 18th, and then they had till July 1st to implement. Since the majority of the final rule is now written, and I'm hoping this is much more compact in terms of timing, so we'll see.
That was such a tough turn to that.
Yeah. Don't know, but I do know that the town that turned it down at their town meeting has to go back to the drawing board and rewrite and vote again. Yeah, there's still really no teeth in terms of enforcement from the state level, but what it does is, and I think you talked about this a little bit, is it opens you up to, um, a potential lawsuit. It's, so if you don't have anything LD 2003 related in your ordinance and you deny the permit, you know, you could be sued or, you know, taken for your ordinance in the ballot. So there's kind of that teeth, um, hypothetical teeth that you will, but there's no enforcement mechanism at the state level. Is there anything else to weigh on the board or guidance one? So, tonight, or just in general?
Oh, and for LD 2003, if you can just give me words, spending changes, um, and I'm sorry, sludge.
Oh, so like, we're, no, we sent all the example information in the week's project, you.
Yeah.
Did you have any feedback, do you?
So I know, so I mean, I think I did.
Follow them, yes.
Because I know there was kind of, you guys did like a straw poll before the election.
Yeah.
And so the parking was a yes, so that's why we moved forward with that, but, um, the board wanted more information on the ADN use and certain rentals, and now the election changed that now.
Okay, so, but I'll put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted, was gonna move it forward.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, and however they decide, then I can draft something for the ORC to look at.
Good. You got anything else?
Pardon?
You got anything else?
That's what I was gonna, okay. Is there any, as we brought it for us? Is there a motion?
I make a motion in there.
Cory, second.
All right, good job.
I'm here.
There's no planning board, right?
I just kicked down the street.
What? Yeah, well, they pulled out.
Well, they pulled out.
Well, they did, for the resource center, so then, um, that makes us look like police, so that's great.
I'm talking about.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, okay.
They'll still come forward with the housing thing as far as I know, but.
Oh, they pulled out, I should.
They pulled out for the resource. They pulled out for the resource center.
Okay, across the board, it's a number of this picture. Report.